Because I'm already a plan or here, so I might as well do the ones. All right, I am going to call the village board meeting of September thirteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Trusty Brochus. Trusty Thuzius.
Here.
Trusty Brenner.
Here.
Trusty Plomakowski.
Here.
Trusty Hartman. Trusty Calabater.
Here.
President Langfeld.
Here. The stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. All right, public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. We have anybody?
We did not receive any requests for a public comment.
All right, we will go to the consent agenda. So I have a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same. Move. Report of village officers. I just have one thing. Uh, I don't know if you've, uh, read the newsletter article that I wrote, but, uh, as you know, um, a lot of times I get criticism that the village doesn't do a good job at communications. I've always given the opinion that communications is two-way. I always share with them how they can get all email notifications on all our meetings and they can pull up our meetings on the website. But I do think that we could probably do a better job in the bigger projects that we address. So what I'm going to try to do, um, is get us more involved and bring in the community on bigger projects that affect them. So right now, the two that I'm be looking for to get some help in would be uh, bringing a neighborhood where well three is gonna be built. We kind of promised them that they could have some input in the landscaping and what the outside of the building. So we're not gonna talk about where the well is going or the footprint of the well, but I do think it's important for them to have an opportunity to give input on what it looks like in the landscaping. Yeah, yeah, right, right. Um, so Mike Exon from staff is willing to to be on that. I'd like to have one or two trustees, um, also meet with them. That has, we probably have to do that within the next couple of months or so, because I know that the engineer is starting to look at that for sending it out to bed. And then the other one is Brewery Road, since, uh, it's a long stretch and we're talking about different things like putting a sidewalk in, uh, uh, having no parking and stuff. I think we should really let the people that live along there know that these discussions are going on and probably have a community, uh, meeting on that. And again, we'd be looking at, we probably have to do that early next year since the engineering and the bid will be going out, uh, next year at, uh, at some point. So I don't, I'm not looking for anything, but if one of those two you have an interest in, uh, let me know. We can have a little bit of a better talk. And I'm not looking at just doing a public hearing. I'm actually looking at putting a leaflet in the door saying, we're gonna meet on this date to, to fill in on where things are. And I think, um, if we do that ahead of time, uh, people might not necessarily agree with our decisions, but at least they had an opportunity to, uh, give their input. And I think that's, that's important. So, um, I'll probably send something out to you guys uh, later this week, just, uh, kind of give you a little bit more of my thoughts on that. And that's it for me. Village Vice President.
I just to let you know, the Lions had their fish fry on Friday night and they sort of turned out wonderful. I can't remember the headphone on that. But the pancake breakfast for the fire department was gonna be October third, I believe, and that is canceled at this time, just with COVID and everything.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just got canceled.
All right, any other trustee? All right, we'll go to village administrator, Bill.
I don't have anything, just, uh, the meeting on well three, we're, we're thinking about having that with the part of regulation.
Okay, say that again.
So that, that meeting for well three and the study, uh, denied and, and looking at what we're saving. By what Mike Exon, we're, we're thinking about holding that, uh, with the partner regulation committee. Uh, as a planning session for, for that.
All right, are we, and what are we doing to notify them?
Uh, we'll reach out, we have a gap.
Okay, well, let's not just do an email thing.
We'll go door to door.
Yeah, I, it's only like fifteen houses, I think, that are important. That's all I did.
See if you have those addresses already, that'd be good, or or names. I think we'll throw it out. I mean, it's a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
We'll do our best to get everyone there, but.
Yeah, I, I just, like I said, I, I just went, the house is right next door than the next one and across the street and anybody that could see into the park.
Okay.
That's what I used to, it's not, I didn't, there wasn't a scientific or pulling addresses, that's just, I just walked it.
They presumably have their own Facebook page in their neighborhoods.
Uh, well, you know who you should, uh, Casey Fitzpatrick is who you should follow. He seems to be that, and I can't remember the gentleman.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, good. As long as we invite them, that's great. Then I guess we only have to do the board. This one seems to be taken care of. Thank you.
That's all for me.
All right, any other reports? All right, we'll go to general business. Discussion and possible action regarding employee wages and benefits. I will let Bill do a summary and then I'd like to add in and then we'll open it up.
Yeah, so basically, uh, we provided an argument in your package. What we did, in order to try to get a, you know, this foundation and start on this, but we took the information that we gathered through videos, conversations, meetings, uh, various, uh, previous studies, uh, both the twenty fifteen study, the, the village budget. And then, uh, the most, the more recent study, in which, uh, day twenty cities and villages association conducted on water, uh, water, uh, so. And so we tried to combine the data to give us a feel of where should the ability at this point. Understanding that we felt, you know, commissioning an independent study on our own, we're really kind of guessing at this point. And wanting to make it actually. And so what we did was we assumed, uh, that, uh, if the twenty fifteen salary scale or the, the, uh, the, the salary schedule was, had been accepted at that time, we adjusted it for, uh, raises since that time. And then we also adjusted it for inflation since that time. And so we were able to nail down, uh, what we assumed would be the, the salary ranges today. And then we applied, what we did was we applied a, a budget supplement request as submitted to you last meeting and current wages to see where within those salaries, uh, rates, the current wages, uh, felt. And so the resulting, uh, shows that almost all, if not all, of the salaries did fall within those ranges. I'm just gonna jump to the schedule here. Uh, feel free to stop me and ask questions if you want to. For like, I don't know if you have any questions about the process. But the page I'll be looking at here.
Hey, Bill, can I just, I, I would like just comment a little bit more on the process. Uh, so Bill and I worked for probably the last two, three weeks on trying to get the supplements and all the ideas in there. And then we wanted, uh, we saw, quite frankly, it's overwhelming in the sense of discussion. I figure, Bill and I figured it's all ten to twelve hours of discussion only, and we were gonna tackle everything in this document, and that's not probably the research time. So what we tried to do is peel off everything that did not necessarily have to be done during this budget cycle. And as you saw in there, talking about dealing with it at another time. Just to clarify, there's a couple options Bill and I have talked about. And to deal with that, and that one would be to set up a subcommittee of this board, similar like we did with the finance. It'd be made up of board members, uh, staff, Bill and I. The other option would be, we take these things and we put them into the agenda and the board deals with them at each meeting of few of them. We're kind of putting our, we feel the timeline to really address this would be we have to have it done by like June thirtieth of next year. Um, that way it could be worked into the twenty. So we kind of simplified this year by just looking at bumping out basically base wages. Did, would you agree with that?
Yeah, so.
Okay. I just wanna give you guys a little bit of the background.
So I was gonna get to that point here. Uh, so what the salaries schedule does, it sets us up for that conversation. This, you know, this is kind of the, the foundation and we need it to start just somewhere, uh, as a, since a complete compensation package, uh, we wanna really gauge where we are, you know, to date now. Once the decision is made, uh, given this is in this way, there's such the budget supplements and the, the state, the salary schedule. Then moving forward, what do we do, uh, for growth and for benefits? So those are all questions that I think could be answered, uh, through this, this committee. And so again, Jay hit it right on the head that, you know, we have a short amount of time, you know, to get the budget done. And so that is our priorities to determine what our budget can have this year. And then, uh, merit or wages moving for the base salaries from before. Things that had been written through our discussion status are all changes and grades, changes and job descriptions. All are intended to come here.
Are there any questions on the process that Bill and I? Or comments?
I'll, I'll make a comment that both at, uh, labor and in my current role, um, we've addressed similar uh, compensation, you know, work and now the data is very good. It's exactly, it's very similar to how it was both springs and old remedies. Uh, you're gathering the right information and I think your compensation maybe is, I would support that.
Um, in the past, we did used to have a subcommittee. We called it the HR committee, this is all your tanks. But we took some people that had actually been in, or in HR in their normal job also. And we had them as part of our committee. And we did dissect like all of our, again, this is years ago, but we dissected all our benefits and everything else. And it actually did help a lot. I thought this, if you hear other people's.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with standing. I, 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 we were looking at the bare minimum.
Wasn't she?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So she was, huh?
Yeah. That's correct, I think we remember.
Do you wanna continue or do you?
No, I think that's all for the presentation, just hoping to answer some questions that, uh, before we, uh, uh, on a particular, uh, adjustments, uh, or any other considerations or, uh, like Jay said, I think the, the objective here is, is for the twenty-two, uh, budget here is to really satisfy what, what the costs are for the salary and the impact of salary budget supplement. Uh, and then making sure that we have a timeline to resolve other issues here, uh, in the first half of twenty twenty-two. So that we have that record for the twenty twenty.
So if you wanna really look at the two key pages to look at are of the report are page fifteen and sixteen.
PDF is thirty-two.
Yeah.
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
And it carries on to the next one, but. So that would show you, what we did is the people who are receiving a bump in base, um, that includes the one percent and it would include, uh, their merit pay. So the people who are not getting bumped in, uh, their base receives the one percent and then the two percent merit pay. And after this year, that is off our table and be restored.
You, you mean the merit, the bonus pay is off the table?
So it's, once you pay it, just, yeah, the people who've earned it, it's not, it couldn't be back on the table, but that is one of the things we'll be looking at. Correct.
That's, that's a quick correction.
Oh, good.
Some of, some of the positions, so the numbers that you see as the twenty-two are all raised, these numbers are the ones of those supplements that were submitted. So some of them are more than the total three percent, so.
Oh, absolutely.
I just, I just wanna make sure that, that's a clarification that it's not a three percent across the board. It's, it's adjusted to what the budget supplement is, so the final number is represented in the twenty twenty.
But now it, I, I just wanna make sure, cause I, that's the one thing I forgot to check with you. This does not include any increase in hours, right?
No.
No, this is just, so there's no increase in hours or grades, just, uh, the paid part.
Just the consideration of the someone's, uh, the salary.
The salary part of each cell.
Correct.
Of, of the current full-time employees.
Correct.
Right. But we're now, it's under the bonus pay, is on that.
No, but this proposed rate has nothing to do with our goals.
No, but we, to be honest with you though, Julie, we took the savings that we would have in the merit pay and put it into counter the increase to make the numbers work. So we usually, correct me if we're wrong, about eighteen thousand for merit pay. Bobby, is that our, our line item is?
It comes out, it's twenty-one thousand.
Oh, twenty?
All, it's, it comes out to about a thousand dollars per.
Okay, so we took nine of, or ninety-seven of it is still gonna get paid, ninety-six hundred is still getting paid out. The, uh, the difference, the twelve thousand we're putting forward.
You put it in.
Yes, yeah. So that way people aren't double dipping basically. And we've always had a policy that if you ended up getting a base raise, you know, you don't get the raises ahead. So if this fits, why isn't with our policy? Or what, I should say, practice. I don't think we have a po- policy on it.
Yeah, so, uh, it, it's since twenty fifteen, I wanna say it was when it approved it and then applied to twenty sixteen. It's always been annual for the, for the, for the program. And we'll always come back to those boards and confirm.
Right, but I think what we've always practiced is when we, like, when we redid your contract, since you got the bump, we didn't give you the two percent also. And I think Mike, when he got his raise, we did also put the two percent on top of that. So, and I, that's how I see this work. Yes, Kevin?
I, I assume this for Bill, but, um, Bill, what did the, how did the staff take this? Like, did you, I assume you talked to them and, and department had this, he's somewhere here today. What's been the, the feel from staff?
Yeah, so, um, and I, any of them can, can speak, um, you know, we met early on in regards to the adjustment, because we were looking for, um, a way to understand what the fair adjustment to the twenty fifteen rate was. And, and, you know, different people have different opinions, but, you know, we thought that by applying, uh, the, the standard over, so what the market's doing over the years, which is inflation. Um, but why do you also apply, uh, the actual market, which is the wages and that's how we came to that. But what equals four point three percent, we compounded that to the, the salary ranges that in, in twenty fifteen. Now, obviously, since about the fifteen, there's been employees, uh, some of the employees. And so we, we, we just took the current rate of those employees, uh, and put them in here to see where they felt in the, in the range. And, uh, yeah, you are concluded, we, we did see that all the employees catch the current rate started to sell as well, into the sales. So I would assume and, and that everyone amazed with the adjustment that we get. Uh, and that's reflected in their.
Julie?
To whoever. So it wasn't a certain percentage, because some of these percentages are a lot higher and some are lower. So, so how did you figure out, like, going versus high? Just ask.
Yeah, so the, so the, the four point three percent that we applied was applied to the minimum and the maximum of the, the range. So we needed to find, you know, if we, if we're looking at, you know, what the schedule may be for these different grades. We needed to find out what I adjusted. Now, yeah, since that time, there's been different hires. Uh, my position, for example, I probably was hired at a different rate than the previous administration who was hired at a different rate than the minister at the time, so it was compared to twenty fifteen. But, you know, as the market demands and changes, uh, there's no easy way to adjust for movements. And so we just assumed the, the current rate for, for those that have retired. Now, uh, the, the, what we wanted to do was get, make sure that we have ranges first and then adjust the current rates to those ranges. So if you look at, I think the previous table one there, uh, where we had adjusted and we found some positions to be short of those adjustments, um, and so we so that, this is the raw data, everything was highlighted in the, in the, uh, found we love those ranges.
But I, I think she's asking how we came up with the base. And the base that we came up with, was with the request. So a lot of them wanted a two dollar an hour increase. And depending on what your base is at, two dollars, for some people could be one percent, could be three percent. That, so it wasn't, we did, would, would, would we consider flat rate? We went off of their request.
Okay.
That, that's, no, that's all right.
No, that helps. But then, so you feel like the, the leads or the, um, the managers or whatever, do you feel good about all these?
Yes.
We feel like.
We had, we had a, yeah, we had an initial conversation in first of the next committee that everyone was coming up with multiple adjustments.
Okay.
And, and just so everybody knows, we pretty much went with what they asked for when it came to a base adjustment. If you read in there, there was other ones wanting to move up in grade. But if you look at it, there's no need because the range is forty percent from minimum to maximum. So we can achieve what they want for their base within that grade, because technically the grade should be tied to the job description. Unfortunately, when we hired this company, they placed people into range. They didn't share the benchmarking for each grade. You know, because that's what they wanted to protect. So we really are, that's why it's gonna take time to actually get the benchmarking or what we think are benchmarkings. And they use grade, but I range, you know, range one through ten. But because the ranges of dollars are forty percent from minimum to maximum, we can get everybody into their base that everybody wants within the grade they're already in. So that would be another discussion on do we move positions up? Because this really looks like when we move up a grade, that would be basically a promotion or a difference. Because if you read in there, they're looking at moving people within their grade one to five percent.
Yeah, and, and, and we know that the, we know that this is a there's so many ways that, that we could divorce this and, and debate it. Um, but without the thing that intricate interviewing, the defining, you know, the, the particular degrees and what the responsibilities, uh, yeah, requirements for each of those careers. I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get there in, in this sort of amount of time. And so the objective was to, to find out to some kind of method that my mind would be compromised between the victim study and the basis of the study, uh, to try and get us to the next year.
I mean, my only fear is in today's market, if we get good workers, we wanna try to keep them and, and we can, or whatever. But we do need to keep the good employees that we have. Everybody's looking.
Right, and this is a significant.
No, it is. I'm just saying, yeah.
A, a significant move. I mean, you know, the finance on this is gonna be very difficult. In two weeks, we're gonna have to be extremely careful on other things, because we are putting a lot of money into salaries. But so, well, I, I'm not, I just want everybody to know that this is not a, this is a, a, a big decision. But we said that this was gonna be our priority, so we're following through with this. And I think there are a lot of good things that we're gonna be able to do in the future, once we work them out. Cause I can tell you, there's a lot of things that Bill and I did agree on and we each had to pick our battles. And, uh, you know, some of the stuff that didn't, the end result was the same. How we got there was just a little different. Or what we were comfortable with. So I, I, I think we're in a position where if you guys are good with this, uh, we can certainly move it forward. And then we just have to see how the numbers work out at the next meeting. But if you agree with at least the process and the base that we have here, that, that goes a long ways. Otherwise, that's what we gotta work out, uh, tonight. So people comfortable with this, or?
I, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Dar, I'll make a couple of comments on that. I am comfortable with it. I definitely think we need a structure in place, uh, where we're paying people fairly and competitively. And I think we need to tell a better story about coming to work for our village and also coming to enjoy our village. And I think it's as simple as using come enjoy a lot more. Come enjoy a great place to work. Come enjoy a safe community. Come enjoy hiking and biking. Uh, our department heads and us, we can do a lot, or I'll, you know, come enjoy it. And, uh, I think that's what we all want. We want a beautiful community. We have a beautiful natural assets. And, uh, I think our staff is a part of the community and is part of what makes us go. So, uh, I'm in favor of it. I think we can continue to build and have both the ranges very clear. So the people that are joining us know what to expect. And also it'll make it easier as we take looks in the forward in the future to make sure we're lucky, that we're paying people fairly.
And just one of the things that they'll look at is why you have this big range of, oh, Bill and I agree, we should have within those ranges staffs. So it's, you know, it's a natural, so when we hire, they can look at how they move up without necessarily changing job descriptions. Any other comments?
My one question, as I think it's obvious. I'm here when you have the wage on page thirty-one, the PDF, it's thirty-two thousand that's going on the levy and forty-two thousand twelve, because the rest of that is being taken up by the water and sewer utility, right? With the, because it's the water treatment plant operator in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-one, how you have the two lines there, how you have.
Yeah, so thirty, thirty-two or thirty-two thousand four hundred for the, the general operation.
Right.
Twenty, so about ten thousand of that is being swallowed by the, either water or, or sewer utility.
Right, okay. That's what I thought. Yeah, and I'll just say, I mean, they're good adjustments if everyone's fine with them. I think, you know, just, you know, the whole type of grading thing and the range of salary, that's all, in my mind, just a bunch of slush where people are. I mean, you could have ranges so big and levels one through six and people all over the place inside of pay categories. I've seen that happen before. And if we wanna work on honing that in, that's great. It's just more or less trying to stay competitive with surrounding communities is what I think is a very important aspect to this whole entire process. And so that we don't have employees leaving to go find jobs at other locations. We want to keep them here. Which, which it seems like with these adjustments. Which, which it seems like with these adjustments from some of the information in the supplemental, where we got pretty close and we're making it more competitive.
All right, anybody else? So then I, I guess, uh, what we will do is we will put this whole thing into part of the formula when we need it to be. So all the stuffs that have to do, uh, with salary can move. And we will be discussing the other ones. And then this will be in, in, uh, representing all the other ones, so we're combining them all. Everybody kind of understand that, how that's gonna work then? Yeah, all right.
Are you gonna take any motion of this stuff?
No, I don't wanna, I mean.
Yeah, the, the patient.
All right, we could do. I guess the question, that's a very good one, Bill, thank you. This one I wanna just leave, cause I don't wanna take a motion, because I don't wanna say we're gonna approve it then when it gets there. We're spending all kinds of money somewhere else and we gotta make cuts. So I think this is, I think what we've done is combined all the, the supplements when it comes to wages, so that can move up. I think we're good with that, cause I think everybody's comfortable. So I guess there's really two options out there. We can do a self-committee. Or we can, as a board, deal with these, uh, throughout the next. I, I wouldn't start until November, but the next six to eight months starting in November. What would you guys like to see? Doug?
Just my gut feeling is I would prefer a committee that has a couple, uh, HR folks who, uh, live in our community who do this every day. That's what they're good at. And I think it could be a mix of a couple of people and a couple of those type of HR professionals and I think we'd get very good results.
All right, I would, if I could just add, I would like to have these to represent the staff.
Absolutely.
You're good with that? All, what do you think, Michael?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I don't know a lot about compensation. I mean, I'll just read this thing and go yes, no, yes, no.
Doug, you okay with that?
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to, uh, form a legion benefit? Is that what we're gonna call it, committee? What do you wanna call it?
That's why I have listed.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, if you have names of HR people that you think might be interested, can you, uh, email me them? All right, so, uh, do we have any future agenda items that people want you to? Doug?
Uh, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that we should come up with a streamlined, more easy block party, something like that.
Oh, okay.
I think it should be easier for people to get together and do something.
Is that, um, do we, what, what committee was that? Did you plan or was that?
No, I already, I already sent it over to our, those attorney people up there, some samples. So minor takes to the board.
Oh, okay, so village attorneys taking care of it, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we approved it. I don't know if they came out. The insurance ended up to be around two hundred bucks or something, so they hucked it down the road. But I, there was something on Villa Miranda was that I don't have from what they made sure that. Uh, I think we should make it easy.
Yeah, no, I agree. We agreed that we were gonna look at that, so thanks, Bill, for doing that. We'll bring it back as soon as, uh, village attorney, uh, responds back. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I will move to go into closed session number one.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus. Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman. President Langfeld.
Yes.
All right. All right, we're open on, uh, on Jill?
We are.
Are you recording?
I am recording.
All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session number two?
I move to go into closed session number two.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second and a discussion. Roll call, both, please.
Trustee Calvater.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus. Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman. President Langfeld.
Yes, we are now in closed session. Yeah, continuing this forward. All right, back into open session. And I have a motion. Okay, the motion that.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
Allow Bill and I to write and a memorandum of understanding and continue to negotiate.
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
All right, any other discussion, Bill, that covers it for you?
Or execute.
And execute.
All good.
All good and, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Aye, I have a motion and second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second?
Oofda, all of you. Two media members, ready, aye.
Seven thirty more?